Calling the regular meeting of Monday, April 3, 2023. The members, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great law which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of all.
May I get approval of the agenda?
As mayor, I approve the way through the agenda.
Sorry, ma'am.
You approve on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, March 20, 2023.
And may I make the motion in the second minutes for Monday, March 20, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have the honor to swear in a new officer to Newcastle, Nick Kaminski. I'll have you raise your ready. And repeat after me. Aye, good name.
Aye, Nicholas Kaminski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm that I will support.
And affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Does the council have any questions for her?
No.
All right, any nominations for recognition?
Madam Mayor, I have one. Sherri Warden has opened up her nail clinic again, Serendipity Nails. And it's at the Old Hop. I think it's a restaurant. Anyway.
All right, any other recognitions? We have certificates of recognitions, quite a few of them. For our Newcastle Grill Basketball Team, third place at state, way to go. Let's see how many names I can mess up. We have Haley Bistro. That's not her.
Nope.
Brooklyn Ben Shop. Thank you. And then we have Olfly Checkets.
Nope.
Mackenzie Compliments. And she's a hoffnail.
Is that what it is?
Yes. All right, congratulations.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you. Jane Harrington. Thank you. Is it any Lichtenberger? Did I say it right?
No, but it's okay.
How do you say it? Lichtenberger? Oh, I've, well, then it's spelled wrong. Is that spelled wrong? Okay, C is not my fault. You're welcome. Hunter McFodder. We did this last year. This is awesome. Julie Morris.
That's wonderful.
Jalen Ostensen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sydney Peterson. Congratulations. Terran Stanton. Shelby Titanin. And then we have manager Presley Fitzwater. And then we have manager Kendon Moore. Victoria Ferenger. And then Coach Ostensen.
Thank you.
Steven Davis again next year?
Nope. Now I'm done.
So it's going to be these assisting coaches now?
I don't know about that.
Probably gets a new, new one in there.
Crabtree?
Thank you.
And then.
Hart.
No.
That's the two of you then?
Yeah, I'll take them then.
So no more?
Most of our country kids all went home tonight, so. No.
You're done?
Done. I get to go watch now.
Ah, well, that's good too. Well, congratulations. You made us pretty proud.
Yes.
For sure.
Absolutely.
We'll see you guys next year, even though you have a different coach.
Yep.
Thank you.
College, or wherever you're going. You're welcome. All right, citizens business in writing. We have Nex Tech Ace Electrical Services LLC, request an electrical license. Under the following, request electrical license. All fees have been paid, copies of their license and proof of insurance and bond have been provided for 2023. Paid $100 in a check. Contractor Nex Tech Ace Electrical Services LLC, master electrician Alan Anzwerf.
I move for you to approve the license. Your honor, second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business in Writing number two, West End Bar and Grill, 24-hour catering permit. This 24-hour catering permit is that under, that under and by virtue of the provision of section 12 dash 4 dash 502, subsection B of the State of Wyoming Alcohol Beverage and Control laws, the City of Newcastle, County of Weston, State of Wyoming, in consideration of the sum of $20 paid by Zachary Road, Rowdy doing business as West End Bar and Grill of the City of Newcastle and in the County of Weston, hereby license permits and authorizes Zachary Rowdy, owner of the West End Bar and Grill, to sell alcohol and malt beverages in and upon the premises of the Weston County Fairground Event Center for an event more specifically described as follows, the Rocky Mountain Elk Butter Edition banquet, May 6, 2023. This license for catering permit is for the term of one day only, beginning on May 6, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. to May 7, 2023, at 9:00 a.m.
Madam Mayor, may I make the motion that we approve the West End Bar and Grill 24-hour catering permit from the Port Fairgrounds starting May 6, 9:00 a.m. until May 7, 9:00 a.m.?
One second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business in Writing number three, Weston County Museum District, seasonal sewer forgiveness, dated March 27, 2023. Dear City of Newcastle, Weston County Museum District promotes tourism for Weston County through the use of brochures, pamphlets, and website and Facebook. The district would like to request a sewer forgiveness for the months of April through September. We appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Cindy Dicert, Weston County Museum District.
Your honor, I move that we approve the forgiveness.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Proclamation number one, Martha Bigford and Taj Townsend, Madness on Main. Looks like we only got one.
Department of Madness on Main. They mean that literally. We just grew up chaos. I'm, Martha and I were coming tonight to bring up Madness on Main. Again, this year would be sixth annual, and we're asking permission to use Main Street once again for water running fights, all that fun, exciting stuff, dump tank, barbecue, breakfast, pancakes served by, which I need to get in touch with them also. We also asked for the open container again with that, and it's just from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. where we're doing the street dance and the barbecue.
Where are we with open container?
We have a document for you to fill out for all of this.
It's right here. It would be from, I forget the street names. So from the First State Bank parking lot where we park the stage, we'll just use, yep, we'll just use that front block, this first block. As we'll close.
Sumner to.
Seneca.
Seneca, yeah.
Okay, Sumner to Seneca will be the open container block from 5:00 to 10:00. But the whole event will take from Sumner to Railroad, Railway. If that's okay with everybody.
Where are you going to put your stage?
The stage will be between the corner of Isabelle's and the First State Bank parking lot.
What dates are you looking?
Yeah, September 2nd. It's the Saturday, Labor Day weekend again.
Can you send open container 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Just that Saturday. And the city of Newcastle did touch a truck last year, and that was a hit. So it was a huge hit. That was, that was, that was a big win for the adults.
Even plans.
Yeah, Amy, want to do that again, please? And thank you.
You've been volunteer. Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, you can start this up.
Yeah.
It was cool. It really was.
I'll have to bring you upstairs to the antlers so you can get the overview of it. Can really quickly see, especially with the fire truck and the water. And the kids just love it. It's getting so, so much bigger every year.
We had to add a kiddie pool, like a little tiny kids pool for like the two-year-olds and toddlers, because the big kids are a little bit too fierce for the toddlers to handle, so.
Might need to talk to the new chief about the dump tank.
Yes.
I don't like where we're going with that.
I get high, but I'll buy the first.
First round of rows for everybody?
Yes.
All city council members are allowed to partake for free at the dump tank first round, as long as the chief's getting done. Is that how it works?
Sounds good.
Yep.
Sounds great.
You made a friend.
And you've got, you have this already. The chief has this already. So we just need to have a motion in the first.
I just have one comment, and I was going to talk to you about this. The Arts Council has considered to moving our stage away from the First State Bank parking lot and that, that intersection, and moving it down one. So that, because when we put our stage there, it, it just blasts right into the Doge Theater, and I've had a comment there that probably we could do better if we moved down the street anyway, because that way we're closer to her business, and she has, well, you can have.
You want to be openly.
Concessions.
Normally our pants.
And that way that we don't bother the Doge Theater, they can sell concessions. And that's what we're considering. I just thought I'd bring it up to you.
Right. And in past years, we've had, the theater's been open for popcorn and candy sales, whether they are just walking the door to buy concessions and then walking back out to the street dance. But there is movie going on that night usually, because it is a Saturday.
It was pretty loud.
I make the motion that we let you do what you want to do.
Yeah.
If you do it right.
I said, I said, I can do what you want to do?
That's the opening.
If you follow the rules, oh, the open container.
Yeah. So the wait, so. From 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. From September to summer. September 2nd.
I seconded it, didn't I?
No, you didn't.
Oh.
All right, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Awesome. Can't wait to see what's new there.
We're trying to get more.
And we thank you for doing that, too.
I enjoy it just as much as ever, even though we're there from 6:00 to midnight.
I know you can stop. You've done a lot. It's hard work, so thank you. And we'll come up with some more stuff.
Yeah, if you guys have any ideas, throw them our way, please. So we're trying to get more businesses involved. Whether, I mean, not just the businesses on Main Street, but like CLT does the life-size checkers. So that's their input every year. But we definitely want more. More involvement.
Awesome. I'll just hang out right here, because you're going to see me next. Number two, American Citizens Virtual Cash Townsend.
Yeah. So I'm back up here again for Fall Festival, be Saturday, September 16, I believe. 16th or 17th?
16th.
The 16th, so. In Dow Park, it starts at 9:00 and ends at 3:00. I usually am there till 4:00 or 5:00 picking up the garbage and making sure all the dumpsters are not overflowing as bad, but it'll go along with the 17th Annual.
Financial.
Show that Dick and Bud Rich, hopefully.
Do you have any questions for her recognitions?
No. The other partners went fairly well at the point of bouncing castle with the stake through the, for three years in a row. It's nice to know. Apparently it's been great.
Go for it.
No, all right. Thank you for doing all this.
I enjoy it. It's probably being like my side gig, yes. Organizing events, but.
We definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Citizens Business Proclamation number three, Teresa Rose, R E S, that, or bicyclist?
It's a bike ride. I'm coming because they requested to use the school district facilities. There's 250 riders. This is the, they've done it seven times. Yeah, they haven't done this one, like, there's one that comes through every year that's about 40 riders. This one, they start in Spearfish, I forget where they end, but they go through small towns, but they pick overnight towns. And I think the reason they picked me, when I ended up talking to them, because when I lived in Sioux Falls, I did, I organized a week-long 1,200 bike ride through little towns, so now I'm the little town. But I'm not going to be here the day they roll through. But logistically, I want to get it all, I really wanted to talk to, you know, you guys to see how you want to showcase your city. They can camp. I thought Dow Park would be a great place for them to camp. However, we could do the school, too. That's open to them.
With dates?
It's June 4th. It's a Sunday night, Sunday afternoon, they'll roll. They'll just kind of trickle in. And I know RPM days is the 2nd through the 4th. They gave the school district a $750 scholarship for a student, and they're all about spending money, like, they like fundraisers and all that, and good group of people. So anyway, they're coming here the 11th through town, so I don't know who, who's chamber now, because I thought that would be an appropriate place.
You think, did you? Henry?
Yeah, because I wasn't sure who it was.
Who's coming through on the 11th?
It's what, 11th of what, April?
April, yeah, to, to meet.
I mean, just to kind of scope stuff out.
Yeah. So I'm in a plan of contact. I didn't know I was going to be gone, but.
Yeah, Henry is now president of the chamber.
Okay, so yeah. And that was the biggest, I couldn't figure out who to contact, so I thought, well, come to the city, you guys will know who to contact. But, I mean, it's not, you know, I didn't know if any businesses wanted to even provide a dinner, which they will pay for, or breakfast the next morning. The swim team was interested. They said they'd provide something for anybody rolling in to use the showers at the swimming pool, but they like variety, they like to, they like to look at towns and kind of check things out. They'll probably, they'll go to all businesses, for sure.
How many?
They said 250 are registered, so, yep.
Tom, did you, did you get your question answered? Who was?
Rasta.
Who's coming through?
No, I haven't had a clear idea.
Okay.
April 11th, they're coming.
And they're, no, who?
The Rastaf people that are actually doing the.
And that's the ones who started Spearfish.
Yes, they're the ones that, this is their ride. They're coming to check, they're trying to get everything in place for the riders when they come through. So they love the, they're coming to check out Newcastle and talk to Katie and then whoever from the city as far as, you know, businesses on board or whatnot. Some of them might utilize hotels. Because some of them don't like to camp, so.
Yeah, that's neat that they're coming.
Yeah, that's nice.
That could be cool if that runs out.
Some things could be done.
It will be.
Yeah, so that was.
And if you need, I can text you Henry's number.
No, it's Rast.
Ride across South Dakota. South, no, South Dakota, DAK. Ride across South Dakota.
They do know where I am.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. Yeah, and I think they go from here, I think, to Hot Springs.
To where?
Hot Springs, yeah. Spearfish were the first night. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll come up with some stuff. Yeah, we'll get. Shelby, Shelby, I give you an hand.
Okay, and share my email.
Yeah, and then if there's anything else you would.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Thanks.
I'll let her deal with it. Cool.
Moving on to Mayor's proclamation. Number one, child abuse awareness proclamation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Mayor's proclamation, child abuse awareness and prevention law. Whereas children are our future, no child shall suffer abuse and neglect. And whereas victims of child abuse and neglect are known to be at a higher risk for experiencing post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, low academic achievement, drug use, juvenile delinquency, teenage pregnancy, and adult criminality. Every child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nutrient, nutrient environment, free from harmful effects of abuse and neglect. And whereas an estimated 1,000 children in Wyoming are victims of abuse and neglect each year. And whereas effective child abuse intervention and community prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among community members, social services, and law enforcement agencies, schools, churches, businesses, and civic organizations. And whereas each April, whereas each April Child Advocacy Centers of Wyoming, the Children's Trust Fund Board, Prevent Child Abuse of Wyoming, Wyoming Citizen Review Panel, the Wyoming Department of Family Services, the Wyoming Office of Attorney General Division of Victim Services, and Wyoming GAL program, G A L program, the City of Newcastle, Wyoming and the partners join together in an effort to prevent abuse and neglect through outreach, education, and intervention. Now therefore, I Pam Walter, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as child abuse awareness and prevention. And where, and witness wherefore, whereof I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Newcastle to be affixed this third day of April 2023.
Cool. Does that go in the paper, your honor?
I don't know. I'll have to ask the paper.
Not me.
Well, that's a, that's a pretty neat proclamation. I think you guys are more on premise.
Call Alexis, call Kim.
Okay.
Moving on to number two, Arbor Day proclamation. The official proclamation portraying the city USA, whereas in 1872, Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing light-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source of giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Pam Walter, mayor of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Newcastle, Wyoming. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generation. So dated April 3, 2023. The 28th will be the Arbor Day tree planting at 10:00 a.m. at the Weston County Senior Center. So if you want to put that into your calendars and you're able to attend. What did they have through that last year?
Black Hills Energy. We worked, we did do black for that tree and the two city roadway trees, I believe, last year.
I know there was quite a bit last year.
Was it the children's?
Yeah, this one's at the Weston County Senior Center. The community garden area. Another one. National Public Safety, public communications proclamation. National Public Safety Telecommunications week proclamation. So proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications week. Whereas the dedicated dispatchers of the Newcastle Police Department daily serve the citizens of Newcastle and Weston County by answering their requests for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas dispatchers work as professionals to improve the emergency response capabilities of the communication systems through their leadership and participation in training programs such as emergency medical dispatching and fire dispatch training as well as other activities. Now therefore, the City of Newcastle does hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th of 2023 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Newcastle and the County of Weston in honor and recognition of dispatchers and the vital contribution they make to the safety and the well-being of our citizens. And I will pass this down for you all to sign. Well, that's being passed around, taking a sign. We'll move on to Kennedy Annexation Ordinance Number One, Series 2023, with which headings reads an ordinance annexing territory described in the petition for annexing date January 18th, 2023.
And we make the motion that we would pass, ordinance Number One, Series 2023, on the first read.
We have a motion in second, any further discussion?
I just have one question, and that is, this moves seven acres into the city, and it's not platted, is that right? So how is it that we decide that how this person can build on it? Or, you know, we, like, for instance, our houses in Gray Division are 25 feet from the street. And if we get this person in there, I think that shouldn't, shouldn't, there'll be something in here that says about stipulations by the planning of zoning or by the City of Newcastle?
There obviously is. Yeah, there's already, there's already information like that in the ordinances. And I review the ordinances with this candidate.
And that's the ones referred to right here, Statute 15143?
No, if, right now it's one sole piece of problem. She hasn't decided to subdivide it in any way.
My only question, Greg, was that when they do come in, is that there's something, and like you say, okay, it's already in the ordinance and we're taken care of.
Yep. She was advised that as long as it stays one lot, there's one tab. If she decides to subdivide it, then she has to extend the water main, sewer main into the property to do the subdivision.
Very good, thanks. And they can add to it. But we're not spreading the word.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
All aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Old Business, Grant Writer, City Administrator. In regards to what we approved last week for a new position, it's been questioned, I guess, and brought up that maybe we should rename that position from Administrator to something more like Grant Writer or?
I tried to look it up in the statute. It was told about that if it was Administrator, basically, the way the statute was written was that they would be over-administrating all of the duties in their advantage. Want that, basically, wanted each one of the department heads to basically manage their departments, not. And there's other places in the state that have these similar positions that are almost like just running the administration pieces of it, not telling public works and everything how to do their job, or the police department how to do their job, or even the front offices how to do their job. They're there to assist them and, and basically try and get grants that are out there. I tried to look it up in the statute for a little bit, but I've been tied up at work, you know, stuff that I've got going on.
I did find where it was referenced in Statute 15 Chapter 11. And it just goes over the forms of government that have a city administrator. It doesn't really go into a lot of description that I found.
Yeah, I looked it up, and a couple of them in Section 15, and each one of them, I only got about halfway through. Hadn't had a chance to go back in and try to read through what's, what's listed in there. What I was told was in the, what's wording of the administrator basically says it's, they're, they're the one that's pretty much the top piece and everything that's filtered out from that, and that's not what we're trying to do with this position.
What do those towns have that have that then? I mean, what do they call that person?
Some of the ones that, I took some of the information was also listed in as administrator.
With a director.
Director would probably work, you know, as a.
I don't think they would call it a.
We want more than, we want more than a grant writer. So we did like.
Principal. Because there's going to be other job duties in there that they're reviewing. It's almost similar to, not only not doing engineering pieces of it, but helping with building permits that are in there, keep a track of the building permits in there. You know, and assisting the other department heads on, when we come to budget time or what they're trying to, what their needs are. Assisting with each one of them. Not necessarily being the go-to for each one of them. Hey, I need to buy this piece of equipment. This one's getting bad. And they have to deal that, no, we're going to run that for a while. If you got the money and the budget and can try to replace a piece of equipment, they should have that leeway to be able to run that budget piece on what they feel for that, part of that department.
Would office manager work? Stacy, is the office manager?
I thought of that too, Tom. But, you know, would that be branch?
She is city clerk, and that would maybe put some other, this other stuff on somebody else, and she can do her job better, I don't know.
Or do we have to totally identify the job description?
I don't know if Dublin has any comment on what might be in the Section 15, was it 1511? I think I've been down through six and seven, right?
So is this just, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've heard a few people, and I've heard not a few people. So I'm just assuming this is the issue of the city administrator designation?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so the first, first off, the, there is in 15-11 dash, oh, I believe it's, because there's a city manager government, and there's also a city administrator form of government. But I think the only fear that we really have in running into that, you guys, is the, basically, just people confusing what this council's elected situation is. Because this is, you know, we have the mayor and four council members, or excuse me, more council members, but that's, that's the only fear I have in looking at that. Because if you were to actually, I mean, obviously, we're not talking about going to a city administrator sort of body, but you'd have to go through some, quite a few different things to even remotely be legally in the eyes of the law act. So. I don't have any qualms with administrator position being named that, because legally, they're not, that's someone that, you know, is designated by the city council, that's hired on by the city council. They're not actually elected as it would be under the city administrator body. But just for confusion, just so that people understand, it might be good to obviously have a different title.
I think we should stay away from the word administrator. How about projects manager?
Planner.
Planner would probably fit in between that.
Yeah.
You know, because they're going to, to me, it's going to be more of a diverse position. There are going to be hands in between all of the different aspects of working person.
Like city manager.
What about city manager?
It's a different, that's, that's under the law.
I think that also falls under the same.
But, Mary, you just said something, what was, what'd you just say?
Planner, city planner.
That's not a bad.
So, well, somebody else. Stacy said it. It's not good. I thought it sounded, I mean, because they're planning, finding the funds for projects.
And, you know, if we've got to get out of the wording piece of it, of legal aspects of it, you know, they're managing parts of, parts of that piece, and they're trying to get grants for projects that, obviously, most of it's going to be for public works that we're trying to get grants for. There's grants and stuff out there still for equipment that we can certainly use. We put in years ago for cars, trying to get. So it's not just one particular entity that's trying to benefit out of this. So city planner, would probably make sense that instead of the city manager, if we've got to get out of that kind of lingo.
Director.
Director, right, legal.
And Danny, if the time comes, if we have questions.
Yeah, I think the. I think the only fear that we would have is just people confusing, you know, saying that the council just unilaterally changed the form of government. But that's, we're, we're, with those language, with that language, we're going to be confusing that a little bit, but I think planner works perfectly fine.
Okay.
Then what, we'll have to put a job description in there as duties.
Yeah.
Or duties. Which has been put together and is put out already in the paper. But it was brought to my attention that, you know, when it was brought out to the paper as a city manager, you know.
Administrator.
Administrator, you know, that we might be in that piece of.
By line.
Section 15. And one little bit that I looked into, I couldn't find any of the wording that would be mayor until I did get down to Section 11 yet, so. But if that's the case, what we need to do to get out of that potential confusion, you know, it doesn't matter what that person we got for a title, it's a job description of what's going to be done with that.
That's correct.
So city planner?
City planner, job planner, project. Huh?
Planner.
Driver planner, or just planner?
Planner.
City planner.
Can we make the motion?
City planner?
City planner.
Okay, do we need to make a motion since we made a motion last time to make that position as a minister?
So, I suppose a motion that we change the definition of the city administrator to a city planner to avoid state statute confusion. One second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, sign. All right, so city administrator, we'll just see. Department head reports, public works supervisor, Greg Summ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have this on the project sheets yet. We just finished getting the quotes. Every five years, we have to clean and inspect our water tanks. We utilize divers to do this. We have three quotes. All of them have the qualifications necessary. Their divers are certified, maybe, all necessary departments. Rubicon, they're out of Arizona. Their, their cost estimate was $10,275. Liquid Engineering, $19,070. Midco Diving, $11,498. I've worked with Liquid Engineering and Midco in the past. Rubicon's a new company that we didn't know about. They reached out to us. They do meet all the requirements, I just haven't worked with them before.
Are both of them equally good to work on?
All of them, all qualifications. We do have some work to do, some extra work to do on tank number one. We're trying to find a small pinhole leak in the wall. All three companies can do a dye test and conceal the leaks of as necessary water activated epoxy.
That's their, their quote for the whole project, not additional for travel?
No, to get them here to clean the tanks and do the inspection and provide us with the required EPA report is that price. To help us repair the tank, fix the leak through the tank, will be an hourly charge.
Now, you said you have experience with the, the last two. The first one we don't. Do you have any references from them regarding?
Yeah, I checked a couple, and they said they did what they needed. Either one of them worked with drinking water. They provided me with a couple of places in Colorado that did some work.
The hourly charge is in addition to the $19,000 of the?
Yes, because we don't know what, how much faults were going to happen.
Okay.
It could be 15 pinholes, it could be one pinhole, we don't know. The other, the other tank company we talked to about helping us with this leak situation, they were upwards of $155,000 to fix it. So this is definitely the less, less expensive way of it works.
Of the two you've worked with, which one is lowest?
Uh, Midco.
And their bid is what?
Eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-eight.
The one that you're looking for, chasing the leaks, is that the one that's on the top of the hill, it's got the upper sleeve, the inside?
We think it's leaking on that welded seam on that, you know, inner sheet.
Yeah, that might be a tough one to chase down.
Yeah. They, they have a dye system, they go along, spray along there, and it sucks it through, and it'll kind of pinpoint where it's at. They have injectable epoxy that they stick in the hole and inject it. Check it out, it meets all the necessary requirements for NSF sixteen sixty-one, which is what everyone's bothered with, so.
Hey, why don't we go ahead and hire Midco to do this job?
Yeah, it's gonna be. Couple other items, sanitation committee that...
Nobody, yeah, nobody seconded the most.
I don't think you're here for this one. Next thing is sanitation committee that we discussed, a little bit of landfill under mediation, but more importantly, we discussed the landfill to closing and permit and expansion. Basically, DEQ is requesting us stay open until the new landfill starts. We could be looking at two years plus, depending on when they can give their funding. So we worked with Inver Miller Engineering to do a landfill closure plan. They have all the necessary information, we've spoken to them about doing an expansion and the extension of our current permit. If we file a new permit, it's gonna be a hundred thousand plus. If we extend our current line and expand it, is what DEQ is doing, we can do that. Give out sixty-five hundred dollars for them to help us with this approximately. We're looking at expanding it approximately five percent over left. That was originally planned for, which was eight hundred and forty thousand cubic yards of waste space left. So anyway, we look at, we have to expand that to allow more, more waste to be stored there.
We have to obtain more land than our...
No, we don't. What they're talking about, which I'm hoping we can get our landfill closed before we have to do, is go up. That means all I do here. DEQ likes that idea, because they have to make it a dome anyway, so if we bring it up in the center, it will help them create the dome they need to shut the water.
Where's the county government and your firm?
They're actually going to Arco.
We don't know where they are.
Yeah, we really, nobody really knows where they are until they, they do enough money to start up. Um, we also met with personnel committee to discuss the building, start this position, and Aaron, did you hear Chuck Farland and myself both have the recommendation of leaving it a part-time job, due to the man-hours that are actually needed to work. It's less than a full-time commission, and retain Adam Farland as the, as a part-time building inspector, instead of Aaron, or a full-time position.
And that's as we just called.
Chuck's been dating here a part of it during the days, and Adam takes your stuff as well. The third thing is legislature put in a million thirty million dollars on top of the last round of Arco funds. So they've requested, if you had an application before January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, they requested that you're, those applications, you can request those applications, be put in for consideration. That meeting is Friday the seventh this week. Mark Lindstrom and I are going down, he's got a project, I have a project, we're putting you for seven, to try and get funding for that.
Hopefully letters did.
We were supposed to leave tomorrow.
It'll be good Friday.
It, luckily, there's a couple of plodger, just enough, not to try it, so.
Well, good luck, right? Yeah.
I'm hoping. They seemed pretty receptive, they wanted primarily, sounded like primarily projects under a million, ours is under a million, so. The other one we had was four and a half million dollar projects, shows us there's more of a need for this one, right away. Other than that, does anybody have any questions?
Somewhere in here, when I was reading it earlier, I saw that you were hauling away truckloads of the doo-doo from the dump pile?
Yeah, contractor is.
And how, how, how many cubic feet are you hauling out?
I, I wanna say it's fifteen thousand tons.
Fifteen thousand tons? And you're gonna spread that on a ranch somewhere?
Yep.
And, um...
The contractor was responsible for finding a suitable land and a suitable rancher that wanted the stuff, so.
Okay, now, in, in this stuff, is there plastics and, and...
There can't.
Okay, so it isn't...
Yeah, no, it's actually fertilizer.
Even though it's plastics, huh?
This cell isn't gonna have much. Primarily, that, that stuff was in the first cell, this is the second one.
So does, does that contractor haul it off and charge the rancher for putting fertilizer on his land?
Nope.
He didn't, okay.
No, we actually paid the contractor to haul it off site and land a plant, so.
Fifteen thousand tons. Now, see, oh, you gotta wonder, how much that fifteen thousand tons would run an anaerobic digester to make methane gas and run our generator to power our lighting?
Well, the problem with that duty is anaerobic digesters are in water, they're wastewater treatment plants, we have a vacuum system. It's comparing the water to a pee. They're completely different systems, we can't utilize an anaerobic digester. We would need to go and activate a sludge plant in order to do that. You're probably looking at millions of dollars.
Only?
Change.
Just, yeah, just a check?
I'd rather write a check for water lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for your firm?
We've got a few highlighting pieces in here on, on the code report you got in there for grant, we guess our RAP is six inch bean being replaced with a median throw, that we have, that settled out. And then the public work for the floor, looks like the ton thirty-three lakes that weren't working, that you did list out there.
Yeah, he actually emailed that to me, my floor, he runs through Black Hills. I have that, I might have heard back from them, I just haven't checked yet.
And renting a crack seal machines for November, and a door patcher for one month here.
Yeah.
Do we have something in place then for the rest of the summer, if we're just renting one month?
Yeah, usually we go to utility cap, patchy, repairing streets of other types, like Wood Street. Kingbury and Wood Street is wondering when we start on issue. We have one that's preparing for the chip seal project.
And what's gonna be the matter of question is what we have on the slate for the summer chip sealing?
I guess this area right around here, if you not have that number in front of me, I wanna say it's got a hundred and thirty thou, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar chip seal project.
And the last one I had was on the safety and training, I see you looking at setting up a time for the voluntary workforce service visit, that OSHA visit, get them in, kind of look over programs and procedures?
Yeah, it saves us five percent of the workers coming, so.
I know all about that.
I know, man.
So I read that, I was like, okay.
We've, we've been doing that for...
Do a lot of that designing, don't you?
Uh, we've been doing that now for six years.
Yeah.
So it saves us about five thousand dollars a year, I believe.
Okay.
Go ahead. Is that big pile that's up there on the hill, is that asphalt?
Uh, which pile and what hill?
Oh, okay, I'll tell everybody where we shoot guns. Okay, you got a huge pile that was built up though over the last few years. Is this the tallest one there?
Concrete, that's all we know.
Uh, we have crushed concrete.
Yeah, oh, never mind, because you said you were gonna look at asphalt recycler, and I just was wondering if that was asphalt.
Uh, no, we do have thousands of tons of asphalt we can make in the patchy interior, basically. Looking at the cost of it, our asphalt last year, to get it in town from Spirit Fish, cost us ninety-nine dollars a ton. We can actually produce recycled asphalt using the milk hill tailings from the highway project a few years ago for about twenty dollars a ton.
Wonderful. Now, you said you're gonna demonstrate this machine, and it says, where are you gonna do that?
At the old landfill, just off of Radio Street. We've got a pile there that we can use. And actually, ground asphalt doesn't work the best, they really like it to be chunky. Trunks actually work better. Mill tailings work pretty well.
And we'll do it.
Yeah, it definitely is, but like the last week when we had warmer temperatures, we actually started this thing up, make a little bit.
Very good, I wanna see that work.
Let's see that.
Anything else? Thank you, Chris. This team, Chuck Gold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go over the dispatch numbers real quick here. Month to date for the Sheriff's Department is a hundred and forty-five calls, for the Newcastle Police Department is a hundred and eighty-one. Upton Police Department is fifty-seven. The Newcastle Ambulance is forty. Upton Ambulance is nine. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department is two. The Upton Fire Department is two, and the Weston County Fire Department is thirty-one. Month to date, all the calls are four hundred and sixty-seven, and year to date is two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. As most of you guys know, we had a little incident that came out this morning with the high school. I thought the response was great from all the agencies. We had the Highway Patrol, the Sheriff's Department, and Newcastle responding to the high school for a possible active shooter. This has been going across the, the state. The sheriff had called me earlier, probably within a minute or so of us getting the call, and said he had heard that some other agencies have been getting this. So I had our new officer and our, Sergeant Thompson in the office, and so I went to Bamhead, and then get ready to go to the high school, as they were literally walking out of the door, our call came in. So everybody responded, response time was great, and we were able to clear, clear the entire high school and middle school fairly quickly, within probably an hour, and we were able to know that everything was fine. So I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Patrol for their assistance in helping us with that.
And you for what you did too?
Oh, that's what we do. We were able to move the majority of the police department's items to the new facility, and we are gonna be organizing that and putting all of that where it needs to go. And then we'll have the football team come back over, and the kids help us move some of the other stuff. We couldn't move some of the computers because the servers weren't hooked up, and so if we moved everything over, then we wouldn't have computer access, so. As soon as all that's done, we'll move everything over, and we'll have a new police department, so.
Do we have a date?
No date yet, but hopefully in the next few weeks, I'm hoping. Um, I think that's all, yeah?
Any questions for... City Attorney Dublin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Any questions for the city attorney?
He's lost.
Dublin, are you getting a blizzard up there?
No, we're currently not, it actually isn't so bad here, but it's not very four corners from what I could see on the webcam. Is it bad there?
No, it wasn't when we came in.
That's because they call school, I think.
Yeah, right.
All right. No. Okay, uh, city clerk, pressure?
The only thing I have is to request to close the office at noon on Friday, if you have any ask for a good Friday.
Good idea.
Also, we'll budget on the eleventh, sorry. We're reviewing the budget on Tuesday, the eleventh, here at five. Yes, so we said, thank you. And that's all? Any questions for secret?
Hope you have a good practice.
Any, uh... Any scanning committee reports? Uh, any other business? Um, I do have something, I had a gentleman give me a call, I guess he lives up eighty-five, I have to go back to my messages, in regards to wanting to see if the city would change the ordinances about annexing into city limits for water sewer usage for a day in the county. So, um, okay, before I call this, can you go back and look up to the council?
No, it kind of defeats the purpose of being in the city and being able to get city services if they're far enough out, obviously, then for having issues, that's kind of creates issues for law enforcement to get there to deal with the stuff we have with that, particular water sewer issues and that, so. I think that changing the ordinance is not something that we need to be looking at, building this.
One, I give the call one, if everybody feels the same way. Any, any other business? Can I get a motion to leave regular council session to enter into executive session referencing sixteen dash four dash four zero five A triple I litigation?
That's on move.
Hey, we have a motion, and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, entering executive session, and please.